One o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have not heard anything from our clerk, so I'm assuming that she'll be here shortly, but in her absence, is anybody willing to serve as temporary clerk?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion. Trustee Lay, temporary clerk.
I accept.
I would second the motion.
Motion by Brown, support by Lannan, anybody else feeling the urge to serve?
It's become my default position.
There's just no more debate on that. All in favor of trustee Lay performing the duties of clerk until her arrival, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, trustee Lay.
I'll do a roll call then.
Thank you very much.
Chairman Milky?
Here.
Trustee Brown?
Here.
Trustee Lannan?
Here.
Trustee Lay is here. Trustee Thering?
Here.
Treasurer Rogers?
Here.
Everyone is here, except for...
Except for our clerk?
Except for our clerk.
Thank you. We have, I'll call it an average agenda tonight, but I'm happy to entertain any motions regarding the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda with a slight reorganization of items.
Okay.
In a new business. I'd like to move C and D up to A and B. I leave tonight to drive to Gaylord at the meeting, so...
Okay, this is the planning mission.
We have a motion. Anybody not clear on the motion?
Okay, I'm just reading. Yes.
Mark?
Motion by Rogers, support by Brown. So the motion, just for clarity, was to approve the agenda but rearrange the new business, move items C and D up to A and B. Is that unclear to anyone? Trustee Lannan?
I just have a question. I'm sure it's correct, but under consent agenda, G, letter G, well head number 10, missing claiming, that's in the correct place? Because I thought it was an actual...
Well, we intentionally concluded.
Okay, thanks.
You could ask for it to come out if you'd like to...
No, I don't want to. It's just on a request type form, so... Very good, thanks.
Yeah, there will be those kind of items in there, and anytime we want to move those out, as we approve the agenda, just say we'll move consent agenda item something out, or even when we get to consent agenda for that matter. All right, any other discussion? Motion to approve the agenda with the modifications and ordering of new business. I'll say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to presentations. We have Jake Borton here from the MRF. Can I just say MRF?
Yes, absolutely.
Floor is yours.
All right, good evening. Yes, Isabella County Material Recovery Facility. We always use an acronym, MRF. It's just a lot simpler than for most people, and if we're talking to them, they have an idea as to what the material recovery facility really is. This presentation was a presentation that my operations supervisor and I put together for a next cycle, which is so does keep an entrepreneurial background that the idea was to be able to organize us in a fashion that we could look to move into the future for the recycling facility. We presented this presentation with a couple of minor changes to it at a competition that we managed to win a $10,000 award off from. It was more because of, we just, we had the time to be able to get it together and do a good job with it. The other, not taking anything away from anybody else who was at that competition, everybody done a great job. It's just the organization part of it was the thing that we had a lot stronger background in than what some of the other... Basically, as it stands right now, the Isabella County Material Recovery Facility, there's a couple of different areas that I'll touch on. We're going to talk about the expansion of the facility, and then we will talk about material management planning. Please understand, they are two different things. They, at some point may come in, as it stands right now, are not one and the same. And, you know, no matter what you're reading in the local press, they're not one and the same. Because what I'm doing, material management planning, at this point does not affect what we're looking to do on expansion on the facility. We, on the material management planning side, have seven other counties that signed letters of intent to be able to work with Isabella County. So we have eight counties total. A block of six is Osceola, Clayier, Gladwin, Acosta, Isabella, and Midland, Gracia County, and Ogbonville County. Eight counties total. So, yes, it is a, we are the largest regional planning in this organization in the state of Michigan. It's referred to as the Heartland Material Management Planning Committee. So that kind of touches on, you know, where we're at with, you know, on material management planning. As you can see, this is people that's been part of that committee and/or part of operations through the recycling facility. Commissioner Angler, Commissioner Moreno, my operations supervisor, Barry Sweet, and myself. As it stands right now, a little bit of background, if you don't know, we have 11 depot sites within the county. We have, I think, six, maybe seven Sharps collection drop boxes around the county that we take sharps as well. That was something that was started probably 18, 20 years ago to try and keep the passage of needles on the Opoyo side of things. That's something that we're pretty proud that we are able to still continue to do. It is, you know, it's about a $5,500 hit every year in my budget, so it's not like it's a small amount, but it is something that the county is willing to continue to support because we are trying to keep the needles off the street. It's no different than what the city does for drug collection to do the same thing. Like I say, as you can see off of this, Isabella County is proposing an upgrade to the facility and moving it to a single stream facility. We have a site plan approval from you folks as it stands right now. I have received bids back from, we had seven companies sign up on our bid sheet. We received three bids back, and it's, we're still trying to work through that whole bid review and make sure that we have good bids and whether we accept and how we move forward with that. So I'm not at liberty to be able to say what the numbers are or anything else. A little bit of a history for the facility. It started, actually, I think it completely went online in 1992. You can see there was starts up in 1990 under a Clean Michigan grant from the state of Michigan. One of two facilities that took advantage of that grant at that time, us and Emmett County. The differences is, when you really stop and look at things, you can tell where one county got that far and didn't plan any farther into the future, and you can look at Emmett County and see that that is a recognized program across this country. On an old dual-stream facility, it is still, they've continued to look to the future. Not that Isabella County done anything wrong, but we stopped planning for that is really what it amounts to. It's of nobody's fault. It's just that we didn't continue to push it to the future. And Emmett has, and that's why, in the recycling industry, if you were in Colorado and mentioned Emmett County, Michigan's recycling, they would tell you, oh yeah, that was Elisa Salsa who run that program for 25 years. Elisa is now retired and moved on to something else, but she is one of the best in the state and in the country, a great program. But, you know, as you can work your way through, as we can see from, you know, from 1990 all the way up to 2022, the one thing out of that that I point out is that, you know, we had COVID shutdown, and there's a reason that that's on that. In 2020, when the counties shut down, or the states all the way across the country shut down, we were down for three months. One of the biggest things that I got out of that was the quite frequent phone calls, not only from the residents, but from the commissioners asking, when are you going to reopen? The governor has deemed police and trash and recycling as a, you know, a necessary service, in that, you know, you fall under that. Again, you know, that's one of the biggest things that we've seen. That was the biggest pressure at the administrator at the time was to get it reopened. And finally, that pressure from the general public did push that reopen. And the commissioners still talk about that today, that, you know, we understand the support that we have to this community, which is great to be able to see and know that we do have support within Isabella County for that facility. You know, as it stands right now, you can see we have, there's a shrinking tonnage. Collecting material in an old dual-stream fashion, it's not sustainable. You know, we know that we need to move to the future. And the reason I say it's not sustainable is that anybody that understands government or business, one of our biggest expenses is labor. So if you have 10 people standing out in line sorting material, that's a massive amount of money. The new technology, where I have 10 people, I could run the facility with two. Now, I could never promote that on the state side, because anytime you apply for a grant, they tell you that, you know, is this going to create jobs? Yeah, it is. So, you know, that's, that's the side of it that's, you know, the entertaining side of politics that I have to work. But the big thing that, you know, you understand is, is that, is it going to create jobs? It will, but it's going to create jobs in a completely different fashion. You're not going to have, you're not going to keep the lowest level of employee or the, you know, the entry-level employee. You're going to keep some of them, because there is still going to be some spots in that facility that's going to deal with it. But it's going to create higher-level painting jobs, more technical, things of that nature. So, you know, so there will be absolutely no job creation out of it. It's just, it's going to evolve in that manner as we, as we evolve as a facility. As you can see here, as far as the shrinking tons, this is a reference why we say that we've got a shrinking ton problem. You know, that red area on the potential is the area that we're missing right now, because we do not have the ability to process anymore. We're processing some, I talked to Mark about this earlier. We're processing some of single-stream material. It's even that much more labor-intensive for us to do it, and it's pushed us to a level that we can, we can keep it in the doors, but that's about it. And for us to be able to continue to garner more tonnages, we need to move to a single-stream facility to be able to run that much more tonnage. In 2000, I'm going to say it was in 2019, I'm not positive, and I think it'll show some referencing here, when we went out on a feasibility study. That feasibility study indicates that we can go from, I think the feasibility showed that we were at about 4,000 tons a year that were produced, which is, you know, it's a pretty good amount of material. If you put that in perspective, the 4,000 tons a year that we do, Kent County does in a month and a half. Don't get me wrong, there's a massive difference in population, but that also gives you a perspective of how much material can be run through the right type of facility. Are we ever going to get to that kind of, no, we will not. But what the feasibility study did educate us on is that it truly does show us that we have the ability to get to, within, within three years, my projection is, is within three years, we'll be at between 10,000 and 15,000 tons a year. And, and the projection off of the feasibility study was that within five to seven years that we could get to about 25,000 tons a year. Part of the reason why I've went out and got other counties on board to work with us on material management planning, eventually, what I'll look to do is, we have an ordinance in Isabella County that says if there is recyclable materials collected, if the facility has the ability to process it, it has to come to the facility. We're bringing everything in that I have the ability to process. Are we leaving tonnages on the table? Absolutely. Isabella Township is one of them that, nothing against Isabella Township, they're doing the right thing in getting recycling in their township. I can't, I can't process it. That material's going to Traverse City, okay? It's, it's great to see that it is getting recycled. Isabella County can't capture that material because we don't have the ability. And that's one township, okay? We know that there's other townships, there's other counties out there that would love to be able to see material recycled. Part of the reason why we understand the value of trying to include what we're looking for in the facility. Any questions so far?
So, when you're, the numbers you're giving as far as the tonnage, are you talking just Isabella or the eight, well, nine counties?
Please keep in mind that when I, when I talk about tonnages for this facility, probably 60% of the material that comes into our facility comes in through a major hauler, waste management brings, there's probably 60% of it.
Already?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't realize that.
40% of it's coming from us, you know, and through our depots, through our township collections. The major haulers supported that facility for a long time, and they'll continue to do so. And, and the reason that I can make that statement is logistics, okay? When you look at things from a logistics factor, the closest recycling facility from Isabella County is Lansing. Ampera is a facility in Lansing. There is one, there's somewhat of a MRF in, which is run by Waste Management Saginaw. They're looking to close that because they're going to build a new facility down in Detroit, and then there's one in Cracker City. Their, Alpena is looking to try and build one. Again, they're looking to try and build one. They're in the same situation we are. So, you know, when you take the logistics factor of all of that, you know, if they're collecting recycling in Isabella County, they've got to run it, Lansing, Traverse City, Detroit, dollar figures start adding up very quickly. And you look at, okay, if Isabella County has a MRF, why does it make sense for us to collect? You know, and it's no different for Acosta County, you know, any of the ones that we're working, it makes no sense for them to take it anywhere else. We're still closer, no matter how you look at it logistics-wise. So that's part of the reason that we based the decision to move forward, trying to do an expansion on the facility. And then, when the state passed material management planning requirements for every county, this was an idea to be able to at least start to continue pushing that drive. We can get counties on board to make sure that we are going to get this supplied to the facility. If we're going to spend, you know, roughly $15 million to be able to do upgrades on the facility, we need to be able to make sure that we can repay that and be able to hopefully contribute to the general fund. And I say that in that manner, hope to be able to contribute to the general fund. And that's that commodity prices are up and down. It's like, who are you folks watching the stock market? I do everything I can to be able to squeeze every penny out of every product that goes out of that facility, but it's the stock market. Oil prices go up, my plastic prices go up. Oil prices go down, my plastic prices go down. You know, so when you see a difference in the change in gas prices at the pump, I'm seeing the difference in change in the material that I'm selling. It's just that simple. Fiber market's the same way, so... This is a, this is somewhat of a design on what we're looking to be able to do on the facility. The two, the area on the lower section there, that, that is the addition on the facility. One of the additions, that's actually been stretched and there's a little bit of change to it, but there is a 60 by 140 on the south side of that building, and then we're adding a 30-foot addition on the west end of the building, is what the intention is at this point. That will allow us to be able to get all of the equipment, as you can see in this drawing, in that facility that will give us the ability to process the stream. There's a couple of different avenues that you can go when it comes to that equipment, whether you want to do robotics to be able to help do some of the picking, or the ideal way is to do optic sort, which is a little bit more expensive, but the quality of material that you get out of it is about as much as what you're going to spend on the material. You're going to get that much more high-end quality. A robot, the eyes on a robot can be able, are able to see, but the material's moving at a fast enough pace that you may have to loop it two or three times back in front of that robot for it to get picked. When, when you run it through optic sort, that has the ability, it sees it here, it'll hit it with a puff of air here and get it off of it. Now, does it still loop back? It will, because if that's laying, if this is laying on something here, it's going to pull the top piece off and it brings that back, the bottom piece back around and be able to get shot off against, in its appropriate place, so... You hear a lot of talk about AI, and the AI portion of it, especially in recycling, continues to get smarter and smarter. Originally, an AI, the AI on a robot was 30 pics a minute, that they would guarantee. That was three years ago. They'll guarantee 60 pics per minute, and realistically, they can do 90 pics, and it won't be probably another six months or a year at the most, and they'll guarantee 90 pics a minute, because it gets more intelligent as it continues to see things. This is a kind of the dollar figure that we're looking at when it comes to the system itself. And I say that, and it's kind of the dollar figure. My protection is that I can have everything done, the building and the equipment, all of it in, it's somewhere around that $15 million price tag. It's a lot of money, but right now, there's a lot of great money out there, and there's also some investment organizations out there that are, so to speak, investment companies for Walmarts of the world. They want to be able to say, Walmart wants to be able to say, this is our green side, so they're, they're handing so much money to an investment firm to invest in green energy. You can see that area that we're working with. You know, there's a, there's a, there's a dollar figure that's associated with material management planning. Every county in the state of Michigan, if you're working with, if it's one county, will get an additional $10,000. Every county itself will get $60,000, so now you're at $70,000 for each individual county. And then you get 50 cents per cabinet, based off the 2020 census. For Isabella County, that's a, you know, the number is $102,197, is how much we would have coming in a year for revenue coming, so to speak, from the state. It's not necessarily revenue, but it's something that can be pushed into my budget as a revenue, to be able to help a material management planning side. And every county's different in their total dollar figure. That's guaranteed for three years. And because of the, because of the census, that's why I say every county is different, you know, that number is. You know, but the, the true fact of it is, is that out of the eight counties total, there's over $3 million worth of revenue that's generated from the state with material management planning. That's a, you know, that's a, that's a pretty big number, to be able to make sure that people are going to have money to be able to work on recycling programs within their county. And hopefully, at some point, it'll be where we can help them set up ordinances to be able to push material in Isabella to... to continue to drive that number up for us for material coming in. Any questions?
I was just curious, um, does mostly the product get sold to companies in the state?
I do everything I possibly can to keep everything material in the state of Michigan. There's only one product that I cannot. And that's because of Walmart. There, there is, but that market is at no value and I would have to pay shipping, just like I have to do with, had to do with glass for the longest time. You know, it, it says right on our website, we take clear glass, and clear glass only. That is for the longest time, it still is. That's a negative on my budget every, every month because there is, I ship this deer bone, you get paid for it. Cost me about sixteen hundred dollars to ship it down there and I get paid about eight hundred dollars. So we're upside down on our direct to stock. I, I find a, you know, a conversation I had with the administrator, this is that I'm no longer going to do that. I'm, when I can ship it to the landfill for just under seven hundred dollars, I've got to, it does not make financial sense for us to do something so negative on our budget. Is there, as technology continues to advance, is there going to be a glass market comeback? I expect the, the fiberglass insulation companies are starting to advance their technology. And eventually, that glass could end up in fiberglass insulation. There's a mosaic glass company over around the Meskegan area. They don't take so much material. One of them are, you know, trying to get into that. The amount of material they can take is extremely hard to be able to get it in there and be able to sell it. And again, when I get enough value out of it to be able to make it work, you know, on that side of things. Yeah, the plat, I have, I have one plastics, what we call a three-three-seven bale, that I could haul it to St. Mary's Cement and be upside down on it. Or I can, and I say upside down, please understand that, you know, I, there's, you have to look at two sides of that. And that's that, okay, we can process it and ship it somewhere and I, I may get three or four hundred dollars out of it. That's a gain. If I run it into the compactor and throw it in the trash, that increases my pull on my compactor, what we call residual. Then I have that residual container pulled once a week. If I move that material into it, I probably, I can guarantee two times a week and it could be three. That's how much of that three-three-seven material I can. So I'm by far, in, yeah, so much farther I had to be able to ship it to Canada, where they're harvesting the, this is the funny part of the industry. They're harvesting the polypropylene out of it, which I've done an experiment with that about nine years ago. And it took me eighteen months to get a load of that material. Don't get me wrong, that composite of that material has changed and probably increased, but it would still probably take me twelve months to get a load. I can't justify leaving that material and sorting it out and having it set in the warehouse for a year. You know, it just, it does, it's not viable. So we push it to somebody else. They're harvesting the polypropylene out of it and then they're paying the shipping to go back to St. Mary's. Because St. Mary's uses it as a, as a fuel. They're using it to be able to run their boilers to, to work within this amount of time. You know, like I said, it's, it's funny how that cycle works, but it does, it ends up back in the state, but it's not on our dime. And it's, but it's still getting used in a manner that, my personal feelings is, is it's getting used in a manner that it's a, it's feedstock or fuel. So it's, you know, and there's a lot of people that would say that, well, it's not being recycled. Okay, it, it may not be to recycling it or what you would expect, but at least it's a positive use. This industry, when it was started in, even in the early nineties, everybody was sold on the fact that we're going to make so much money off of recycling that you're not going to believe. And they very quickly learned that, gee, in nineteen ninety-two, the biggest value that there was in the market space at that time was glass. That's where they made their most money. And it was, you know, I, I, we got records that can go back to show, you know, that it was, it really wasn't a love money. You know, but the industry has continued to advance enough that they understand and are able to collect and make cardboard. You know, cardboard is the biggest value that comes out of my facility. Anything else?
So I'm going to show some ignorance, but Traverse City went single stream, I don't know, a dozen years ago maybe, I'm just guessing.
Yeah, somewhere in that area.
In that area. So from a producer, meaning a resident of the county, it, will it look like Traverse City here as far as how, what we recycle?
As far as the numbers are concerned?
No, but more like the, the types, I guess, of material where?
You, you can get into, because you get the advanced technology, there's a lot of things you can sort. You can get into sorting cartons, you know, the, like your chicken broth, things like that. There, there's actually markets that want that.
Like the Tetra packs?
Yes. There's markets that want that. And there's a dollar figure.
Interesting.
So, you know, yes, there's, there will be some resemblance to it. Will it completely mirror it? No, but because every place, again, you know, one of the big things that we get phone calls on this time of year is, will you take my boat? It absolutely is recyclable. Can we get it recycled here? Not something that we want to get into until we get into the newer technology. Because that's one of the things where it would take a room full of loose bags this size for me to make one bale. You know, we, we were, we were selling some of that material. It was coming out of Mitsuba, on the south side of town here. But it was plastic, it was coming in on their parts. It was clean plastic. They were baling it into small bales. It was ideal for us to be able to do. That contract went away and their, their focus and, and market changed enough that, you know, I'll forget that material. But when it was coming in that form, it was already compacted. I can take, I can take six or eight of them small little bales and throw them in our baler to make one. You know, so I can go from a, you know, a hundred-pound bale to a three-thousand-pound bale. And, you know, at fifteen cents a pound, you can do that. But it's, it's the collection process and everything else. So there's, you know, is there something that, as we continue to evolve, could you set up the, you know, a hand collection that somebody's bringing it into the facility? You know, there's always some kind of ideas that you look at, but can you make money on it? Because I base my decisions on that facility. And, you know, I do the best job that we possibly can to be able to make sure that we're trying to make money. We're not, I'm, I'm not the, you know, the tree hugger, at least as I, as it is right now with me running the facility. I'm not the tree hugger, nothing against anybody, please understand. But I'm not the person that's going to base decisions on what, you know, we need to, we need to recycle anything. You know, we need to recycle everything that makes sense financially for Isabella County.
Sure.
And that's the way that I have always based my decisions and always will.
I guess what I'm asking is, Union Township has agreement with the county and so there's pickup service. And currently, we divide our recyclables into the fiber versus plastic and glass.
Right.
Yeah, so because of the single stream, we're just going to collect that stuff together and?
Yeah, it'll, it'll go in, you know, in most cases, it'll end up in a, whether it's a sixty-gallon or a ninety-six-gallon tote, it will, everything will get put into a tote and it'll be collected in that nature. So you guys are aware, and one of the things that we will do and once we get through that process of build on this facility, we will come back to the municipalities that we have contracts with and let you know, you know, and once we get started into this deeper and know that we're going to get there with it. Basically, I know that I have all the financial ones tied up. We're going to at least start letting you townships and villagers know that, hey, we're not the experts in collecting when it comes to curbside. We'll look to you guys to decide how you want to approach that process, whether you set up or whether you let the residents set up their own collection process. But we're going to take the material. We just, I'm going to pick the ones that's going to be collected. My trucks, you know, that, that, that's actually a two thousand fifteen that you can see in that picture. That's how, and, and my other one's a two thousand six. That truck, when we bought it, was a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars to collect it in the manner that is, to collect single stream. And trucks are between four hundred and fifty and five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I can't justify the county going out and buying one of the trucks and putting it on the road and trying to collect other material in Isabella County. It doesn't make sense. Not when you have companies like Ranger, GFL, Waste Management, Public Services, that are, you know, worldwide companies that are buying them, you know, they're buying hundreds at a time. They're buying new vehicles in that kind of quantity. The newest technology is that arm that reaches out and dumps that cane. They're doing them things because work-related injuries. So it makes sense to be able to have an arm do that instead of an individual. And that's why I say them trucks are over five hundred and fifty, they're almost six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I think, is what them trucks are. It's, like I said, that's not something that we want to become experts in. They have all the logistics, the equipment and everything else in place that eventually that'll be something that we'll look to come back to the, you know, our contracts and say, you know, hey, this is something you guys should start thinking about, start looking at. We don't want you to jump ship yet. Please let's get closer to where we want to be. But we also understand that it's important to look into the future. Anything else?
I have a question that's unrelated to the MRF, but has to do with material management. Is, there was a rumor that we might be getting municipal compost at some point? Is that at all grounded in reality?
You're referencing something that the city has indicated, which we might guess, and I don't want to assume. I know that, I've had conversations with the city that, you know, they would love to be able to use that piece of property to be able to do something, but it's not a conversation I've had other than just a simple speak on it. The one thing that I can tell you is that they have an anaerobic digester that's coming online that they are looking to be able to do a tick process with. And that would, one of the things that you can do with anaerobic digestion is, is that you can run dark waste into it. Because it's also a nitrogen feedstock for the anaerobic digester. So is that something that they're going to do? I don't know. We've had that conversation and I would hope that they would go that direction. We would love to be able to see some kind of composting facility come into someplace in Isabella County, whether it's the city doing it, whether it's a city-county partnership, or whether it's a private individual that takes that on. I would, I would love to see it and support it very much so. You know, where the city goes or you can?
I, I thought Central had actually set up like a pilot of that. And that what the city was referring to was partnering with Central to take on or expand what Central was already doing at a small scale. That, that's what I have heard, but I don't know how accurate that is.
When Jay Khan was still working at Central Michigan, that's very much the case. I don't know, I would say that they're continuing that avenue.
Yeah, I think they were in talks with some of the people that were involved with that.
They were, they were running material marketing combo. What they were collecting, the food scraps off of campus was going to market. I, I, I worked very closely with Jay. I've worked very closely with Jonathan Webb, who was the facilities director at St. Mary's. You know, great people. And they're trying to do the right thing. You know, how St. Mary's continues that? You know, I don't, at this point, I don't see them aggressively continuing to do that. And I know they're no longer taking food scraps up that they're trying to run a very small compost within their means. And they're somewhere on their way.
Yeah, I guess what I was getting at is I, my impression was the city got wind of that and that's where they kind of got the idea. And that's why they were pursuing that option.
And it's part of the reason why my discussions with Jason Moore at the city about, you know, looking at something like that, to be an anaerobic digestion process.
Glad you brought that up.
Always, I'm a, I'm a compost nerd.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for taking so much of your time.
No, that was very informative.
Happy to have you here. Just a note, I have to make an apology. Normally before the meetings, I'd like to check with our internal tech support over there to make sure that everything's ready to go and I forgot to tonight. So Hazen, I'm grateful that we were ready because I didn't check with you, so my apologies. So that moves us to item seven on the agenda, public comment. Public comment is restricted to three minutes regarding, regarding items on this agenda. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. And with that, we'll open up public comment at seven forty-four PM.
There's nobody online.
So let the record show, nobody's connected remotely. Those remaining here are indicating they would prefer not to get up. So we'll close public comment at seven forty-four PM. Reports, boards and comments. Before us tonight is a board review resignation, so we'll likely have a board review spot to give. And I think we have a, at least a Z, one ZBA opening and we have the EDA opening. That EDA one's kind of important. Of the nine members that sit on the EDA, many of them are, have busy schedules and travel, so it's, on occasion, it's hard to get a quorum. Just a note. Board member reports. Trustee Thering?
We meet next week, so next meeting.
There, Cody?
The May sixth election, everything went good, numbers came out, everything's good.
I happened to be coming into town late that night and saw your car here. And I'm like, what's, at least, oh, yeah, the election. Trustee Brown?
No report.
Trustee Lana?
Yeah, I have a couple of things to report on that I attended. Today, I happened to take advantage of attending the Middle Michigan Development Corporation annual meeting where they reflect what took place with their organization in 2024. It was a, a really informative event that was held here down at the Courtyard Marriott. And the room was filled with community leaders from our county and neighboring counties as well. Katie Mora of MMDC hosted it. And she has stepped in the reins of president here in the last quarter due to the unfortunate passing of Jim McBride. She's a terrific and upbeat speaker. So she filled us in on many other things that ran on with the MMDC in 2024. They had a keynote speaker. And that was, I can't tell you his. That was Dan Gilmarten of the, he's the executive director and CEQ of the Michigan Municipal League. He shared words of wisdoms and history of Michigan's economic position over the last hundred years and gave his vision of the future. He was talking to the ready audience to talk about, you know, the environment that the citizens want to live and work in. It was really a well worthwhile meeting to attend. Also, I attended the County Board of Commissioners Committee at the whole meeting. Some of the highlights of that include a presentation by Joseph Rivet out of the Bay City area. And his presentation was on the state land bank authority here in Michigan. There's probably, I'll say, two-thirds of the counties in the state of Michigan involved in that. involved in that. Isabella County is not involved in it at this point, but, so he was highlighting the benefits and opportunities that could be realized if he were a participant in the state land bank authority. And I think it generated some interest. Also a note, there was a plan to move forward, a grant agreement for work to be done at Harret Park. The scope of that has changed a little bit. It's going to focus on the bath house and pathways to the bath house and the parking lot for accessibility purposes. There's discussion about the building inspection fee adjustments and how the county manages electrical inspections and building type inspections. And talk around that was how it's this self-sustaining operation in the sense that they generate revenues to cover their costs. And also of interest was moving forward to pay the night payment in the radio towers that were a major project in this area for emergency radio dispatch. And they'll be down to two payments left after approval of this payment. And so that pretty much hit some of the highlights of the county work session, committee of the whole. And then I'd also mentioned that last Thursday and Friday, myself and Treasurer Rogers, and I'll let her share what she experienced, I hope. But we got immersed in a two-day work session facilitated by Sue Radwin on policy governance as a boot camp situation. We had folks from Washington State affiliated with Columbia Basin College. We had folks out of North Texas, a nonprofit philanthropic type organization. The major player who was there was what we would call I Ride here in Mount Pleasant, but they, they're called The Ride in that Arbor area. And a whole host of those folks. All these folks are utilizing policy governance. And I thought it was very, very valuable. I look at our policy manual and, you know, it seemed quite foreign at first. And it never really dawned on me that, that structure is very similar to the layout of the policy manual that all the folks who use policy governance would refer to. So we, we all have a pretty clear understanding of what was going on, even though we're a municipal and they happen to be a, a university or a nonprofit. But they all agreed that following policy governance has been a great choice for their organizations. So I will conclude with that.
Thank you. Trustee Lay?
Got nothing.
Treasurer Rogers?
Policy governance was good. Learned more, helped make more sense, so.
And I don't have anything, so we'll move on then. Consent agenda?
I had the warrants this week.
Oh, yeah.
And everything looked good.
Awesome. Happy to entertain any motions.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Support.
Motion by Rogers, support by Cody. Any discussion? Thanks for doing warrants. Trustee Lay? Seeing no debate, all in favor of approving consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Consent agenda passes unanimously. All right. Clerk Cody, in your absence, we rearranged the new business this evening. Oh, okay. So with that, let me adjust. That takes us to item C on the agenda first, regarding Attorney Lawler's request, correct? That's the order you were requesting? Mr. Stuldray, would you like to introduce this one?
Yes, thank you and good evening, everyone. There's a report on this item that begins on page 41 of your agenda packet. This is an, a matter that's been going on since 2019. I'm not going to go into all the background, but as the legal matter was working its way through the judicial system, there were, the, the question originally was, should the township pay for legal defense costs that were going to be incurred by former assessor Pat De Priest? And there, between January of 2019 and January of 2023, there were eight actions taken by the board that approved the payment of legal fees on her behalf. And those totaled approximately $76,000. The case is fully concluded now. Former assessor has been exonerated and all claim, for, for, for all claims that were made against her. Following the last action by the Board of Trustees, it was decided that no more payments would be made on, in support of those legal fees. Expenses continue to accrue. And as the report indicates, there is $29,000 of remaining legal fees that have been billed by Attorney Lawler, who works for Clark Hill Law Firm, that's been incurred on behalf of defending Mr. Priest. We had an updated closed session as to the status of the case a month or two ago. We did not discuss the payment of legal fees because we had not been requested by anybody to pay them. As we would have anticipated, that request did come in. There's a letter in your packet from Attorney Lawler requesting that we pay those remaining legal fees. So that's the item in front of you tonight. I think, you know, the, the board, as a board, has spoken to date that they thought it best to pay the legal fees on behalf of former assessor. And you've done that to the tune of $76,000. Question for you tonight is, do you want to pay an additional $29,000? I think one of the questions that you'll need to ask yourself as you're deliberating on the issue is, if you don't, what do you feel the likelihood, or what do we feel the likelihood is of us being brought in to a new legal matter from Clark Hill and/or Mr. Priest, where they would claim that we have a legal responsibility to make those payments? And our attorney has advised us that it's permissive to date. So you, you kind of end up needing, needing to gauge the probability of, if you say no, will we be brought into another legal matter that we have to defend? That we will then end up paying legal fees to our attorney defend ourselves? If we win, great, but we will spend some money, and I don't know how much, in defending that case. Or if we were to lose that case, we will have paid our attorney to defend and then paid the other $29,000. I think that's kind of what you need to weigh. And then alternatively, you could continue on the path that this board, no, not this board per se, but prior boards have taken where they have agreed to make those payments. Be happy to answer any questions, but I think that's the issue in front of you.
Questions for our manager?
Yeah.
Trustee Lay?
Is this, this going to be the last? I mean, if, once, if this has paid off, this is it? We, we're done with this matter completely?
Yes, the, it, it was tried at the circuit court level, US Circuit. US Court, this was a US, US federal court matter. It was tried at the lower level. Judge made the ruling. It was in favor of dismissing claims against Mr. Priest. Then that was appealed. The appellate court acted more recently. And I've quoted from their ruling in this report to you. She's been exonerated, been dismissed from the matter. The only other appeal could be to the US Supreme Court. And that's, probability of that is close to zero. But this, the, the case is done.
Yeah.
Other questions? Dots, motions, anything?
I would like to make a motion, unless somebody has discussion.
Oh, yours, trustee.
I'd like to make a motion to pay the remaining legal fees on behalf of former assessor Pat De Priest in the amount of $29,083.28.
I'd like to support that motion.
Motion by Thering, support by Brown. Discussion?
Yeah, I think it's time to close this. For my, for me, it's been five years dealing with it.
I think that, sorry.
Yeah, I think, I think it's best to close the case just so we don't have to bring anything else onto our shoulders as, as of another lawsuit. I think, as the manager speaks, we, I think he's speaking correctly about the possibility of that being high if we were to deny this. I, I don't think we need to take the township any further into that. That's my personal feeling.
Trustee Lay?
I was going to say, the, the potential expense is sounding flippant. $29,000 is a small price to pay to avoid more legal fees to have to defend ourselves for not paying the initial $29,000. And then if we, as the manager said, if we lose a case like that, then we're going to have to pay it regardless. It just seems like, let's close the book on it.
I'll jump in. So I'll, I'll agree with your comment, both your comments so far. That's, that's where I was at on Monday. Pretty, pretty clear to me, I think, as I looked at the, the risk of potential additional litigation, I thought it was best for our township residents and businesses that, that we, we take the lump and move on instead of potentially getting more lumps, right? Because it, it's a known cost versus an unknown cost. I have struggled with it partly because the previous board did make that decision not to pay more. So I wrestled with that in my mind. But I tend to agree that it's just time to put it behind us so we don't waste more time on it. We never should have been down this road, but that's behind us now.
You're right.
You guys said it pretty, pretty well.
The known, the known cost thing is really, that, that puts the nail on the head, or the head on, put the hammer on the nail, whatever.
I, I still hate pulling the trigger on an additional $29,000 for our residents, but, yeah, it, it could be worse.
Looking at how much this entire lawsuit costs to have to do that, and again, that, that just seems like a bad play.
No more discussion?
No, sir.
I, I just send sympathy to the family that was impacted by this lawsuit, what, what generated this. And it was an ongoing case over six years, so it wasn't a clear-cut, easy decision. Lot of deliberation back and forth. We've invested significantly to support one of our employees in their professional capacity on behalf of the township. But unfortunately, this was the result of some of that professional activity that took place. And we are bearing a brunt of significant expenditure that isn't bringing benefit to the citizens, the union township, unfortunately. But we do have a, a known amount in front of us. So from a risk management point of view, it sounds like the board is willing to accept that amount of risk in addition to the past expenditures, regardless that a, a previous board came to the conclusion that no more funds would be appropriated. I will go along with the majority of the board here and support payment.
Seeing no one else. We have a motion on the floor to approve payment to Attorney Lawler in the amount of $29,083.28. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, board. Nice to put it behind us. Moving on, that brings us to item D on our agenda, which is our policy ends, 1.0 to 1.5 discussion. I appreciate the administration making some of the notes from our last discussion and having those transcribed as potential changes in the language there. I don't have a method in which I want to approach this other than let this be kind of free form. So if anybody has any items that they would like to start with, I'm happy to open the door for you. And if not, I have one thing at least. All right, seeing no one jumping forward. I did note that the, the changes, let me just ask that. In the changes that were made in here, does anybody disagree with those changes as far as what we decided on? At least temporarily? Okay, and in this, under section 1.1.1, it says, "Brian is working on capital planning language for inclusion." So I did do that. But I'll say I struggled. And where I struggled more was about where should it be? So if, the reason I brought this up is I, I felt it's important that the township do capital planning for all of our major assets. We've done a great job over the years with our public works. And we're continuing to make strides in other ways, in other assets. But it really makes sense to me that we continue that work so that we have forecasting for budgeting, et cetera, et cetera. And that those forecasts take into account our ends as we're looking at what the future looks like, right? So with that, I did write something. Let me find it. And I didn't use AI to help with this, by the way. I thought about it. But I wrote this. I wrote, "Township shall implement capital planning best practices in forecasting, forecasting, budgeting, and management of assets to align with township ends." Can we read it again?
One more time, please.
Township shall implement capital planning best practices in forecasting, budgeting, and management of assets to align with township ends.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Support.
All right, so the, the question is, for me, I kept trying to identify where it belongs in our ends, and I came to the conclusion that it should be one point three point five, which is under, "All residents may enjoy safe and healthy environment and resources that are essential for their well-being and quality of life." Because as I looked through the other top bullet items...
It makes the most sense.
It ma-, it made the most sense to me. All right, now let me throw another caveat into the works in this. Did have a discussion with our manager regarding this. Mr. Stuldrath, if you feel I misstated anything, or you'd like to augment what I say, feel free to jump in. Manager said, "Well, maybe this really is something that belongs earlier in our policy, that is more with the guardrails of the organization." In other words, as we talk about financial guardrails, you know, not, not spending beyond what our means are, what's beyond budgeted without approval, those types of things, right? That this would be a protection mechanism to do that. As I reflected on that, the issue I have with that is, we're not there yet. My fear is, it would be okay to put that in as a guardrail, but if I was to evaluate the organization's just on that guardrail by itself, we're not compliant yet. But that's, we all know that, and we know it's something we're striving for. And because it's something we're striving for, I took the approach in my mind, that's why it's an end versus a guardrail.
Yep. That, that was kind of my thought, too, when you started talking about this, I'm like, if we're not there yet, it's an end.
Right, and I would hate to evaluate manager on performance for something I don't expect it will be done with this year even. You have thoughts on this? I'd like to hear them if you do. No?
Well, I didn't know if you were done.
I, I am, I just, I wanted to throw it out there that that was brought up, and it's, I think, a good idea. But I think it does belong in the ends for now. It's, this is an opportunity for us to lower the helicopter, deal with something that we see as a need, and then we can monitor over time. And as we progress and are able to accomplish more of that, then we can begin to maybe monitor the organization to make sure those capital plannings are being caught up, or kept up. All you? Cause I'm curious.
I, I think it's fine in the ends. You know, that, that will allow, I, I believe, for the, for, for the infrastructure, the nuts and bolts of the capital planning to be developed over time. But I do think that capital planning is, is more, at the end of the day, more a budget-type, finance-related. And I could easily see your very la-, your very same language being phrased, such as township management team shall not fail to, whatever you said, in, you know, as part of the annual, you know, budget process. What, what I imagine in this planning exercise is a list of things, all the physical assets. We already do this on the water sewer side, all the physical assets. On the water sewer side, you're pretty familiar with them, pump stations, screw pumps, you know, filters, all that kind of stuff. So there's a list of all this down a left-hand column. And when we incorporate the rest of the township, we would see things like park infrastructure, whether it's fencing, roadwork, buildings, what have you. In this facility, it's, you know, the building, Township Hall. That you have all these things down the left side of a worksheet. And then, as you move across the right, you have years. You know, maybe it goes out ten years. And you decide in the initial plan which of these things that are in this column on the left are gonna be done in which years. And then underneath all that, there's a resource section that says how it will be paid for. Some of it will be obviously cash financed, others it might say debt. And so you have this picture that is initially created. And if done right, and there are no surprises, all else being equal type of thing, each year in that plan, kind of becomes the budget, it, it gets incorporated in that particular year's budget. And it's updated every year. So if we had one right now, year one might be twenty-twenty-six. And of all else being equal, we've identified the resources, we have identified the items, the assets that are gonna be either maintained, replaced, or what have you. That becomes almost by definition part of the budget recommendation. And then the plan is updated, that would end up in the back of your budget book. And now twenty-seven is year one, and one year is added to the backend. And that's kind of what it feels like to me, at least based on my experience of this kind of thing. Vehicles along the left. I don't know if we'd be including office furniture, you know, that level. But right now, for instance, computers, we have a replacement schedule for those. That's a form of capital planning. Network switches, desktop equipment. Whether or not those particularly meet the threshold of the dollar value that falls into what's, we've got to define what capital is at some point, usually by a dollar threshold. But it would allow the board and the community to be looking forward. And so you might know today that in three years from now, the outfield fence at one of these ball fields, you know, that is gonna be replaced. Instead of just deciding three years from now, that's what we wanna do. So I'm fine wherever it goes, I think there's a, there's a template, there's a model that we need to put together. And so y'all can see and get a feel for how it would work in real life. And then once that's embedded into the annual budgeting process, I could see it moving over to the executive limitations. We do some long-term forecasting similar way, it's not quite the same, but every year, we've added a new year, taken off the front year, and so it gives us a continual look out from a, you know, fund balance position, those kind of things. Thank you.
Would the building be part of that?
Pardon me?
The building.
Yeah, I, I would think all of our buildings, Jameson Hall, Pavilion.
We'll have to go through and do an inventory on the non-water and sewer side.
Yep.
I see this capital plan being, well, maybe I shouldn't say it that way. The asset management plan that water sewer has to do is done in a particular format that's state-driven. It's required by regulations for them to do that. Whether or not that capital plan is separate from the non-utility capital plan, or if it's all part of one document, just two parts, I don't know yet, but... Everything from vehicles, you know, to this building, obviously the parks, Jameson, reception center, the, the hall, the pavilion over there, playscapes.
Okay, thank you.
Any big T-cut items we might have to plan for financially?
And is the place to insert not just replacement or significant maintenance of existing assets, but you can put new ones in, you know. Could be, you know, a third park, and so
Right.
you got land, you got the infrastructure on the land, you know.
So is there a general feeling from the board that this is a good end? Is there any push?
Yeah, it is.
Important.
So we'll include that in our current list of edits?
I think it was a good point to stick it, too.
Looking through, good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I really struggled with that for a while. All right, with the rest of the ends that we have here, does anybody else have things they would like to potentially add, or change, or remove? Trustee Lannon?
So, I went through this. Spent quite a bit of time, actually, but, you know, I don't move at an earth-shaking speed. But, so I did some scratching on this, both from a perspective of the ends, as well as some wordsmithing that I thought would sharpen up the document itself a little bit. And going into just what you were talking about, capital improvement, brings to my mind foresight, thinking about the future. And we, we talk about a sustainable community through effective use of resources to achieve the highest quality of life. And I think about that, and it's really talking about financial stability, which encompasses duty of care, duty of loyalty, and duty of obedience as kind of a given when you're on a board and your responsibilities are for the financial health of the organization. But it, it doesn't list but it could foresight. And so I thought I would throw out to you guys to consider under the first line, one point zero, "Union Township exists to support a sustainability through," and then I would add, "through foresight and the most effective use of resources that achieve the highest quality of life." That refers to our high-level vision, our continuous outward looking for the good of the organization. So, nothing we have to really deliberate on now unless anybody has the desire to, but I would propose in that first line after sustainability, community, through, adding foresight and the most effective use of resources.
I like the word, I mean, that's what we're talking about with capital planning is, and a lot of what we've been doing is trying to look ahead to make sure that we're in a good place. So I, I like the addition of the word, it, it brings something that I agree is not stated in the top, for lack of a better term, mission statement. But I, I mean, I don't feel strongly if there's pushback, but it seems like a good addition.
I'm good.
I think it just clarifies the level that this board operates, yeah.
So, "sustainable community through foresight and the most effective use."
Yeah.
Okay.
And then dropping down to the, the next line, "The highest quality of life encompasses sustained or enhanced," and then the five bullet points there. Under the first one, "Community well-being and the common good." I would like to consider adding in there, I thought about it as a sixth bullet item, but I think it'd fit maybe better on that first one. Community well-being, citizen pride and the common good, or community well-being, the common good, and citizen pride. And just, I come up with that as, if the things that we do can, a citizen could say, yes, that I am proud of that, I'm proud to be part of this because of that, it brings me pride. And they're the owners, and we're just trying to listen to and, and do what they, listen to their visions and, you know, sift through and what makes sense, and with, with the term citizen pride, it brings me to the thought of citizens support what they help create. And so, as we listen to them and what we implement makes you proud to be a citizen of the township, you get backing.
Call that buy-in.
Yes. So that was a harebrained thought, I went off on there for a little bit. But I, I, I like it, it talks about ownership linkage, creating that conversation and pride. So that was a, a thought for there.
Before we move on then, thoughts on that? Looked like you might have something.
Oh, no, I'm just agreeing, like, I do think that having more community buy-in would be a beneficial thing considering our relationship with some of our constituents.
So again, the highest quality of life encompasses sustained or enhanced, community well-being, citizen pride, and common good.
I don't know if we need to get too wordy. No, that's...
No, no, it's just discussion.
But the highest quality of life encompasses sustained or enhanced, and I don't, I think this states the basics things, we've got, um, um, the common good. Well, it, it, part of the common good is pride in where you are, you know, I don't know, I don't know if we specifically need to mention pride, but it's not a bad thing, but just...
And we do have, yes, yeah, we do have it in one point one point one.
Yeah, one one, one point one, point one, point three.
Right, and, and I did, um, come across that, and so yes, I, I recognize that. Next thing I came across was one point, one point one. We have a stadium, and, and this is kind of minor. "All demographics within the township can feel welcomed." Can we, does it improve anything instead of saying can feel welcomed? And, and it's their option, but saying will, will feel welcomed, or shall feel welcomed?
Or just drop can.
Or drop can, that, that is another.
Take away can.
What?
Yeah, I think taking away the word can.
This is gonna sound incredibly pedantic, could we do, take away can and the secondary feel, so it's
Yeah.
Because I'm like, it's, it's a little...
Yep.
The English, the English teacher in me is going, ooh.
So all demographics within the township feel welcome, belonging, and engaging.
With the community, yeah. It should be engaged with the community, as opposed to engage with the community.
Yes. Okay. I agree that flows and is a an improvement.
I would agree. Any other suggestions or pushback? Trustee Therry?
The one point one, if you said something like residents engage in a community if you said something like residents engage in a community life that will allow, then bullet point, "all demographics within the township feel welcomed, feel belonging, and engaged." What we want to do is present a township that will allow, and then all the bullet points after.
It becomes a sec, like a secondary, like,
Yeah, take.
The ways that this is going to happen.
We want them to feel, yeah. Residents engage in a vibrant community life that will allow, then bullet point, "all demographics within the township feel welcome, belonging, and engaged with the community, a welcoming atmosphere." We want, you know, in a sense, as I read this, I say the top sentence over again, because, you know, to me it makes sense. Like, kind of like as we're in the other parts of the governance policy, there are many bullet points, and I always say that first sentence over along with each bullet point. I don't know if that's how other people read it.
Oh, I think that's.
The rest of them aren't written that way. I mean, I think it sounds good, but the rest of them aren't, like it says, like in 1.2, it says, "all residents can thrive and achieve more than their basic needs." And then it, bullet point underneath it, so it's like it's a statement and then bullet point.
I'm sorry, which one are you looking at?
I just followed it down to the next one.
1.2.
You know, so it does a statement, and then it has bullet points after, but I mean.
Allow residents to, you'd have to change almost every one, you'd have to add a two or.
Yeah.
So maybe you just.
I would just leave it.
It's, it's the same message.
Yep.
Yeah.
But, I, you know, like Tim is saying, if we have a chance to sharpen it,
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe that's not a necessary word to allow, and then go to each one and take out the if and or but.
Yes, a whole different format with a colon, because here, this is a statement, and then here's.
Yeah.
Good.
Good thought, though.
I mean, it sounded good too, but the rest of them.
Trustee Lannan, you got something else?
Yeah, I have, so I, I don't know what you guys, do nothing, or?
What?
I, what I heard was, taking out the word can and the second feel.
Yeah, okay.
So we'd read, "all demographics within the township feel welcomed, belonging, and engaged."
Engaged.
Engaged.
So E.D., engaged.
With the community.
I think this is, so the next one that I have addressed is right below that 1.1.1.2, where it says, "fair and non-discriminatory code enforcement." So I think that's absolutely essential. But as I go through this, that's operational, as opposed to our outward vision, that's starting to look back into our day-to-day operations. So to me, it almost seemed, I like it, but it seems out of place.
I like it there.
I would argue that it isn't just outward looking, because it's non-discriminatory code enforcement's gonna reflect on ownership. No one's gonna, we don't want any, one, apartment owner, or renter, or builder, or whatever, to feel like they're treated differently than any other in their business loop.
So, seems right in the right spot.
Yeah, that doesn't bother me, I understand what you're saying.
I really like it being said. Okay, and then right below that, so it currently says, "residents take pride in their community, understand its past, and engage in its future." So a little twist on what's there. I was thinking maybe, "residents take pride in their community, understand its past, and engage in the present, and either shape, imagine, or create the future." Because you do live in the present. We're, we're talking about the past and the future, what about the moment?
I think, I think it's a good clarification, I think it's implied there, because engage is a present tense, to engage. And so I think it's, we're not asking them to engage in the future, we're saying engage now.
Yep.
To build the future.
To build the future, so I think it says it, but it maybe not as, in the way that you did, as direct.
Can we get an Oxford comma?
What?
An Oxford comma. When you have three things in a, in a.
Yeah.
What does "understand its past," what is that? Can you explain that to me?
One example might be, that's why there's things like historical societies that exist everywhere.
I mean,
Thank you.
It's also kind of in the name, I mean, you know, why we are Union Township as opposed to something else, like, that was one of the reasons I moved here. I thought that, like, the history of the township was really cool.
That's awesome, it is, it is. Okay, continuing on, if you guys will allow me. 1.1.2.1. It says, "create more frequent opportunities for citizen board dialogue." My thought was it might work better, instead of creating more frequent opportunities, let's just create continuous opportunities for citizen board dialogue, meaning.
Or continually create opportunities.
Or create more opportunities.
I'm just saying, with, with the create continuous meaning, stop in, call, make contact. That can, you know, more frequent to me sounds limiting compared to continuous. We're always willing, we don't make a stop and say, come on in, like a frequent stop on a train, get on, get off. It's just the doors open.
Could you just take more frequent out and just put create opportunities?
That's exactly what I was just thinking.
Yeah.
Exactly what I was thinking.
I got there first.
You just spoke first. I think we were on the symbiosis there, so.
Right on.
You're right. So on my attempt to add words, we seem to be eliminating words, which is great.
Sometimes less is more.
Absolutely.
Any, any opposition?
I think every word should have a purpose.
Any, any opposition to Trustee Theryn's suggestion?
No, I don't have any, and one of the things that I've been doing is, what does this look like? Like mentally, like, what is that going to look like? That, that's kind of the game I'm playing with my head, in my head.
Yeah, I actually like it better with not more frequent.
Yeah.
Yeah, me too.
Good, thanks, Tim.
Moving on to 1.3.4. I just put a question mark there. I guess at this moment, I just don't understand that. Code enforcement to original specifications for all properties.
To my understanding, and I could be completely wrong, the way I interpret it.
Well, you may be grandfathered, right, for certain things? So that would, that's the original to me. But it also seems to be indicating that we're not enforcing beyond the specifications either. That's how I interpret it, both of those things. So you might be grandfathered in with zoning, right, on certain things? And so we have to enforce based on the nuances of grandfathering. But we're not gonna code enforce beyond what we specify as should be enforced. Is also how I interpret it. But I, anybody else interpret it differently? I guess I'm curious how the organization interprets that.
We, we, our job is to operationalize all these ends, and we do within the limitations you give us. What this says to us is, whether it's a zoning code, or a general ordinance, or what have you, that we're gonna enforce those specs. And there's, where I think it kind of came out of initially was, for instance, we weren't really enforcing an approved site plan, after the build was done, and were we going back and making sure all the shrubs are in, the lighting, and all of that? And I think there was, my sense was that we were a little lax in that, and it kind of caught the township on one or two occasions. And so there was an emphasis placed on this type of thing. Same with the kind of related fair and non-discriminatory code enforcement. So that's how we operationalize it, up to the point where, as you read in an email, we had a property owner do a build without pulling a permit, helped him get a variance, blows off the ZVA, and we've initiated legal action. That's kind of what, why we're doing it, 'cause we're reading this.
Does the word "original" change your interpretation?
So, no.
So if the word, not that we have to add or take away, but if that word was not there, 'cause that could be confusing to, it's not confusing to the manager and his staff, but somebody who might read that might go, "original, well, what's original?"
As proved.
I just was asking.
Yeah, and my answer is, we're fine with this language if y'all want to change it. I, I think so far, I haven't heard any changes that would material impact what we do. And so if the board is more comfortable with different language, I think, I think you should do it. If during this discussion on any of these, I feel that it would materially change what we're doing, I'll make sure I bring that to the board's attention, so you can understand that it may shift emphasis, or, you know, something like that.
So I lifted that up, 'cause I, I just really wasn't clear on it, there's a question mark, and looking for a reminder of what it meant.
I kind of like the way it is, in my opinion.
Yeah, I have no issue with that.
I'm sorry?
I have no issue with it the way it is, I think if we dropped "original," it wouldn't bother me either.
If, if you wanted to change anything, I might suggest that you include the word ordinance, only because code in the normal vernacular always drives people to the zoning code.
For building.
Yeah, 'cause that makes me think of like electricity and things like that, you know, it doesn't make me think about ordinances.
So you want to say ordinance?
Yeah, I think so.
Enforcement, or code enforcement, or just add the word, or?
Ordinance and code enforcement.
Yeah.
Ordinance and?
I mean, I would, I'm interpreting code more broadly than just the zoning code.
Right.
I mean, we have a zoning code. The state has a building code that our ordinance says we are to follow. But in, you know, in the local vernacular, code often seems to be referring to zoning code. That's not how we're handling it, 'cause we enforce our ordinance as well. But if you wanted to add that kind of clarity, it may help you. 'Cause the ordinances have to be enforced too, right?
Right, it may help. A resident, if they read this.
Yeah, add in the ordinance.
Because I interpreted it the way you described it, since it's broader.
We would like the residents to read it as manager, steward, driver, and his staff.
Right.
Interpret.
Interpret it, right.
They don't necessarily interpret it as code, they interpret it as ordinance, and I think that would be more appropriate than it. So that's, thank you.
So, what about that suggestion, if we just read, "code and ordinance enforcement to original specification to all properties?"
Yeah. I like that.
Is that good to, your question good enough, Tim?
Yeah.
Sorry, Trustee Lannan?
If it works, then it works, yeah. And that does help me understand it, and the whole narrative there behind it. Okay, let's slide down to 1.4.4, which we kind of spoke about not long ago, I think.
Yeah, we did.
Yes.
And, "increased use of alternative forms of energy." So I kind of put a line through that, and I'm not sure it's perfected or even desired, but I put, instead of increased use of alternative forms, I put, "effective conservation of energy consumption within township facilities and operations."
Effective what?
Effective conservation, so just understanding, we try to limit whatever energy type, if you want to label it green, you want to label it traditional fuel, whatever. We're conscious of not wasting it.
That's a whole, that's a whole.
Sorry.
That's a whole different matter, because this is like, we're bringing in alternate forms, so it's two different things, conserve and alternate forms, right?
So, energy's energy. We've burnt coal for a long time, we've burnt wood. In our discussion we had here, we buy whatever's delivered to us from the power company. We talked about, yeah, we'll, we'll maybe try and find a more efficient light bulb.
Right.
But we're not really looking to increase alternative forms of energy.
It was my understanding, though, that it was kind of one of those forward-thinking things, that if we do, like, new capital, you know, investment projects, that we might look at doing solar panels, or wind turbines, or something on the building to help offset some of our energy use.
Yes, so that's alternate use.
At what point is it just normal, though?
It's not there yet. But conserving, conserving is fine, and that's a different, a whole different thing, right?
Well, I think they both speak to being conscious of your energy consumption and the footprint that you impact in the world around you.
I'm gonna.
But I'm just throwing it out.
Gonna pause us for a minute?
Yeah.
Ben, noticing there's a few people that maybe would like a short break? So if, if we're okay with it, can we take like a five-minute recess or a four-minute recess?
Oh, good.
Can we, if so, can we have a motion to do so?
Motion to have a five-minute recess.
Supported.
Motion by Cody, support by Lee. Any objections or debate?
No.
All in favor of a five-minute recess, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. We'll recess at 8:47 PM, so back at 8:52.
So we were on 1.4.4. So I'm gonna jump in if I may. I didn't interrupt you too bad, did I, when we?
No, and again, I'm just throwing out thoughts.
I, I have two higher-level thoughts on this. For me. And I think not wasting energy, conserving for the township itself is a good end. We should be good stewards of the money that we spend on the energy that we use, right? And that could mean using other sustainable means, such as solar panels, or whatever. Geothermal heating for a building, right? But the other is. We also have a zoning ordinance that can encourage, or allow our residents, businesses. To take advantage of new technologies to offset their energy costs. And to me, those are kinda separate, but they're in the same category. And to me, both are important, though, that the township is a good steward of our resources. And that we make sure that we allow. Entities within our township to take advantage of items as well, such as planning commission. Made a change to the solar panel ordinance to allow.
I believe it was twenty feet, and then we, the panel, and we allowed it twenty-five, or something like that.
To help encourage someone, yeah, made sense to do that, but our ordinances can encourage or discourage. People from doing something they might wanna do.
So I would actually increase, add more to 1.4.4 to. Encourage ordinance, you know, develop ordinances that encourage.
How about promote?
Or promote.
Promote use of alternative forms of energy within the township facilities and?
Operations and.
Community.
Community.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that that's.
Promote.
Promote use, promote use of alternative forms of energy within union township facilities, or within township facilities. And operations, or operations and community.
And the and community there is giving the green light that our ordinances should reflect that end as well. I don't know if you just got back, but I was.
Or encourage?
Indicating that. We don't wanna encourage it just for the township itself, the entity township, but for the community that, at large as well, so that. Make sure our ordinances allow people to take advantage of new technologies.
Okay.
So I'm asking.
After facilities, eliminate and, and then after operations, comma, and community.
Oxford comma.
And promote rather than increase.
And the reason I was pointing to manager Steel Dryer was your interpretation of that from an operations perspective. The new language, propose.
Promote alternative forms.
That you interpret it the way we think you should.
Does it make sense?
It means this part.
Take it easy there.
Promote the use of alternative forms of energy within. Township facilities, comma, operations, and community. Is kinda like the current wording, right?
Yes.
Yes.
The current new wording.
I think one of the things that we run into is.
I prefer promote versus increase.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's, we have to, it's one of the things where we're, we think of ourselves like our governance as township, but we have to think about. Township as the broader body that's being governed.
And community is trying to strengthen that perception of that word.
Exactly.
Because the way it read before is a township facilities, and I don't see that at all as the community.
No.
Now, would eliminating facilities, I mean township operations would include facilities.
Yeah, that's probably good.
Yeah.
Help simplify some. Yeah, we're losing the Oxford comma, we can put extra one in just for fun.
Nah.
Township operations and community.
Any objections to that? So as I have it now, promote use of alternative forms of energy within township operations and the community. The?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't know if that addresses anything you were getting at, Trustee Lanin.
We just steamrolled you, sorry.
No. I'm just the catalyst to trigger your guys' great minds. Keep throwing stones on it.
Are, are you happy with that?
I am, it doesn't necessarily address conservation of energy consumption, even though it might modify it. Spread it over different types of energy.
It could, it could have that effect, though.
Yeah, and I think one of the things that has been indicated to us is that, like, as, as an entity. We're already very energy-conscious as far as conservation goes, because it's just fiscally responsible to be so. That, that kinda falls under our fiscal.
Yeah, it'd be just assumed by everything else we say.
I think we've made that end, what else you got?
Okay.
Good call.
1.5. And. I just, it may be written perfect, it's just my understanding. So, new and innovative commercial establishments and advanced manufacturing. Distribution engineering and research facilities are drawn to union township through commerce-friendly economic development. Policies consistent with MEDC redevelopment-ready community programs, best practice.
I actually have an idea about this.
So, first of all, I'm not sure if the word advance is the right word, or if it's advanced. With the D on the end of it, manufacturing. Or you're just talking about advancing.
Well, is it adjective, or is it a verb? Are we advancing the manufacturing, which is what I interpreted it as?
Yeah, a verb, is how I interpret it.
Okay. So it just doesn't flow right when it starts getting into research facilities are drawn to union township.
Okay, so I have a solution for this, because I know what the problem is grammatically. It's that you have a verb, but you don't have a verb in the first part of the sentence. So, attract new, attract new and inventive commercial establishments and advance manufacturing distribution, uh, distribution engineering. And research facilities. And then take out are drawn to.
Yes, it's the, the drawn to really makes us.
It makes it very awkward.
So what was the first part of the sentence again?
Attract.
Attract.
First verb.
First word.
Attract innovative commercial establishments. Correct?
New.
New and innovative.
Yep.
You just wanna add in attract.
And take out are drawn to.
And new's important, you know, as we move forward, whether, you know, AI is something new and at the forefront, but whatever may be new.
I would take out are drawn, and just leave two union township.
Yeah, you leave two there.
Yeah, you need the preposition.
Teachers.
Yeah. Gramarians.
Trustee Lanin?
And then, does it make sense after that, talking about economic development policies consistent with MEDC?
Oh, let's wait, we can't take that.
I think so, cuz it, I mean, part of our end is saying, let's use best practices, it's not leaving up a lot of wiggle room there.
And the redevelopment-ready communities is something that Mr. Nanny went through to make us compliant.
Yeah.
Which is, probably doesn't mean to someone like myself, who just has a home, but maybe to somebody who's coming in.
Who wants to build something here.
Will catch that and go, okay, they're part, you know, they'll know that, what that means.
Right.
And it is significant.
So, last and possibly least, 1.5.3. Again, instead of create mechanism to increase. I was just thinking, open door dialogue with business community to ensure quality services are provided.
So I was going to suggest, this was my, my suggestion, like, cuz I was thinking about the same thing, was remove create mechanism to, and just make it increase dialogue with business community.
How about promote dialogue?
I was thinking promote as well.
Dialogue as well, would work. And I honestly think we should extend it beyond just the business community, and reach out to other entities to see what we have, you know. How they want to see the commercial and business side of, of union township shaped. I, I think we were having a discussion about, I was discussing with your daughter about, you know, reaching out and having dialogue with the university and the college, about what. Kind of, you know, environment would be more attractive to students. To help facilitate, you know, the preservation of CMU long-term. How do we get more students here?
Would that fall under commerce, from your perspective?
I think it would fall under commerce, because I think that, that's.
It's helping support our commerce.
Yes.
Do we have? Would you, for me at least, everybody else probably caught it, but. Promote dialogue with the business community to ensure quality services provided, how, what were you adding to it again?
I would, I was going to say, instead of just saying business community, or maybe we need to build a new, maybe we need a new line item.
1.5.1.
Well, it technically be, it would probably be, I think this is 1.5.1 at this point, cuz we got rid of the old 1.5.1. And the 1.5.2, so I guess we'd be adding a 1.5.2.
Do you want it to say promote dialogue with the business community and other entities to ensure quality services?
Yeah, that would work too. But then we'd have to define other entities.
Oh.
Not so much, I mean.
Yeah.
We have to say, just broad brush it.
Yeah. Keep it simple.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
Sure. And the way I interpret this too, to ensure quality services provided, that means the township is providing services for the business community and.
Yes.
Other, right, I mean, that's, cuz I could read it, I could interpret it the other way, which is, make sure the business community is ensuring quality services are providing to our, to our township.
That is a slippery slope.
Do you see why I might read it that way?
Yeah, I can see why you would read it that way.
Oh, how about, how about?
What?
Promote dialogue with business. Community and other entities to ensure quality services are provided to them.
But who, to whom?
Business and entities.
Yeah.
To them?
Or promote dialogue to ensure quality services are provided to business community and other entities.
That works better, I think.
To ensure? Oh, change it.
Yep, it's rearranging.
Promote dialogue to ensure quality services are provided to the business community and other entities. I like it.
I do too.
That good?
Yeah, that's a little more specific.
Did you catch that?
More specific.
Suggestion being, I'll see if I can get it right this time again. Promote, no. Promote dialogue to ensure quality services are provided within the business community and other entities.
With.
That sounds good.
With?
With or to.
It creates.
With the, or with him? Or with?
I'm not the, I'm not the English person.
To create dialogue to ensure quality services are provided to business communities and other entities.
Yes.
Yes.
I think that's an improvement.
You wanted to move things around so you could get out on time.
Tim, I really.
Second.
Wow, rough crowd. Uh, Trustee Lanin, I really appreciate the work that you spent, and you there, I think we made some good improvements in language and. And we've added a few items. And we've taken some out.
Just cleaned it up. Run it through ChatGPT.
All right.
Can I get it right?
Do we, do we have more to do on this tonight?
I think we could table this for now.
Okay. Do we need, do you feel we need another session like this?
Not that one.
Ask him.
Well, I, so I'm at, just making sure that, that.
I said ask him.
Okay, so with, with that, then.
We'll do this again next year, right?
Yes, and we, we can do it anytime.
Yeah.
But yeah, we'll schedule it again for next year, but. But it, the next step at this point then would be get a draft with the changes in it, so that we can approve the end.
Yeah.
Okay.
Beautiful.
Okay, moving on, on our agenda. To item.
Writing a resume.
A.
Like writing a resume.
Item A, we have resignation, as I mentioned earlier, in the board review. I did reach out to Mr. Trudell Lozaro. I really liked his. Deminer, his presence on the board review, I was really excited after. his presence on the Board of Review. I was really excited after having got to serve with him. So I was sad that he had decided to leave, but I did reach out, make sure that the township hadn't done something that made him want to do that. And it was just uh, he had a little frustration. I don't think there's anything that we can fix at this point. Nonetheless, he's submitted his resignation, so I think our, do we need a motion to accept this, Mr.?
Yes, you do.
I move to accept resignation of Jacob Trudell Lozaro.
Support.
Uh, motion by Rogers, support by Cody. Uh, any other discussion? I will add Board of Review meets again in July, so right now there are two members of three. Board of Review, just as a reminder, is a three member board. And so if we failed to have two show up, we would not have a quorum, which would not be good. Look for the township for the Board of Review.
We don't have an alternate?
We do not currently.
Is it possible to?
Go ahead. A trustee serve?
No.
Oh. I I can't, I can't sit a, take a voting role and I did, I did statutes pretty clear.
Nobody on this board can be on, nobody on the board of trustees, all seven of you, none of you can be on the board.
Can't anyone from the other boards be on there?
Yes.
Okay. Go punch John Hayes.
Yeah, I like how he's been engaged in planning commission, yeah.
Yeah.
Would you ask?
Good idea.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Would you mind asking John Hayes, planning commissioner, if you might be willing?
If you'd be interested?
Yeah. And just because you're going to see him next week.
I'm gonna see him.
Or, you know.
Absolutely. Or if you see him, that's fine.
Oh, I see him every, I see him the same day you do.
Well, we'll both ask.
Okay, I'll.
So we have a motion to accept the resignation.
Yeah.
Any other debate on that? All in favor uh to accept the resignation of Jacob Trudell Lozaro from the Board of Review, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to our last new business item. Item B on the agenda, uh, second reading and adoption of the zoning ordinance amendment, uh, limited allowance for additional building height. Uh, just for the public um that may watch this later, I don't think we have anybody online now. This is a second reading. Uh, this board did review the ordinance during its first reading. Uh, we had a public hearing at that time. So if you sense that the board's not real engaged, it may be because we've already dealt with this matter and that doesn't mean there won't be discussion, but I don't expect a lot. We'll see. Mr. Steel Dryer, do you have anything to add to the introduction of this?
I do not, thank you.
So with that, I'll leave it up to the board to decide what to do with this.
I can make a motion if we're good with it.
Yep.
Yeah.
All right, I can make a motion, I know what to do with it, to to conduct a second reading for the proposed P T X T twenty five dash zero one amendments to section three point four, permitted uses by district and section six point three four, public and institutional uses of the zoning ordinance number twenty dash zero six to revise and extend a limited allowance for the additional building height above the maximum otherwise allowed in a zoning district for public and institutional uses religious institutions, business schools, colleges, universities and indoor publicly owned recreational facilities and to adopt the amendatory ordinance as ordinance number twenty five dash two.
Second. She supports.
Motion by Brown, support by Cody's who I heard. Uh, discussion? As I mentioned, we kind of covered this already. This is can be much more of a formality.
Yep, perfect.
Seeing no requested discussion, Clerk Cody, would you do roll call of the board, please?
Supervisor Mulkey?
Yes.
Treasurer Rogers?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Lanin?
Yes.
Trustee Lay?
Yes.
Trustee Theryn?
Yes.
Clerk Cody, yes. All yeses.
Thank you very much. Uh, that brings us to extended public comment, which is restricted to five minutes regarding any issue. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record. And with that, we will open up extended public comment at nine thirteen P M.
There's no one online?
Let the record show, no one connected online and no one coming, no one coming forward. And with that, we'll close extended public comment at nine fourteen P M. Uh, managers comment, comments, item thirteen on the agenda. Mr. Steel Dryer, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, just want to bring your attention to the special Olympic banners that we've put up at the Pickard and one twenty seven interchanges, both as you're heading east and west. I, if you haven't had a chance to look at them, I think they're they're pretty pretty nice. We did that pretty quick in in collaboration with the convention and visitors bureau. You've heard about our work on our new website. That's going to be going live on May twenty first. And I want to uh put a big plug in for Tara's work on this. She's done a tremendous amount of work on this, gotten the organization involved. We've had outside um input, citizen, if you will, input after it was in a space where we wanted some people other than the organization to take a look at it and they provided comment and good comment. Tara's done just a great job with this. The rest of the organization, of course, has been involved because they're reviewing these things, providing input to Tara, but it's really been Tara's leadership. And then she's also been assisted, I think, in a fair amount by Amy, uh, but it's really Tara's uh leadership that has gotten us to this point. The classification and compensation study is underway. You may recall that I informed you about that uh contract a while ago. And I do uh want to mention that the Isabella County Historical Society is having their history day event, which I believe is annual. This year it's on May thirty first, it's from ten to three at the Commission on Aging. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because um Department Director Nanny has, with the assistance of the clerk, uh, the union township is going to have a display at this event. And I don't know if we've had one before, um, so I don't want to say it's the first one because, you know, we've been around for a hundred years. But there uh, I haven't seen the display yet. I've seen some of the um minute, minutes from eighteen something meetings. It's really quite interesting. And he's putting together a display that I think will uh reflect very well on on the township. We have been, I was kind of starting to wonder about this. I'll send out an email tomorrow, uh, but we have been invited to the two percent grant award, uh, call it ceremony. What that means to me is that we have res- we have received approval for at least one of our applications, if not more. So that's good news. And then I do want to just, I guess, reiterate or add a little more clarity uh to one of the things Mr. Borton stated. The county will be getting out of the recycling collection business. And so that'll be an item, and this may not be for a couple of years, uh, but this will be an item that we'll need to address. I'm guessing, um, because they won't, they won't be collecting it anymore, which means just like our, uh, I'll call it trash. Our residents make arrangements with the private companies to collect their trash. And that could very well be what they end up doing with recycling.
Individual.
Individually. And we might want to look at that maybe both from a trash and a recycling perspective. Because what you could end up with is five different hauling companies running around the township six or seven days of the week.
Yeah.
And, you know, that, I don't, I don't see that right now with our trash, uh, but we don't, we we don't have any, any, the township does not have any involvement in this trash hauling area. Anybody can set up business, they can run their own schedules, residents call, pick, life goes on. And that, if we continue with that same model, you can, that would be happening with recycling. Right now, we charge the residents, I think it's eighteen dollars a year.
I thought it was sixteen.
Seventeen, seventeen.
Something, once a year.
Less than twenty.
That's not very much money for the county to haul away recycling. And I can't imagine that that would be occurring for whatever the number is, fifteen to twenty dollars a year to come every week to get your recycling. So I just wanted to put a finer point on that because it might have got lost in some of the presentation. Uh, but but that's all I have, so thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to a final board member comment. Trustee Brown?
I'm all set tonight, thank you.
Trustee Lanin?
Yeah, I'd like to lift up three people who live in the community briefly. One, I'd like to just mention someone who's been involved both in at the city uh level and at the township level. And for being involved for fifty plus years in Little League here in the community. And that'd be Mr. Jim McLean. Just appreciate his dedication to the community and the the Little League. Another person I I would lift up with, um, lift up would be, uh, he's a member of the Mid Michigan or the Middle Michigan Development Corporation Board. He sits on a couple of the township boards, the E D A and the Zoning Board of Appeals. And um, I would term him as the neighborhood nice guy, just a real good community member. And uh, that's Rick, Rick Vars, Mr. Vars, so just wanted to acknowledge him for his uh great commitment to the community over his lifetime. And final board, the final person I I'd mentioned, also, he's looked to by the larger community, is a member of the Middle Michigan Development Board. The community seeks him out for his knowledge uh and professionalism in municipal operations and I think they appreciate his uh style and calm demeanor and that'd be our manager, Mark Stuldryer, who's also a, not just a township um leader, but a community leader at large by being on the board of the M M D C. So just three folks that I see as real bright spots in our community.
Trustee Lay?
I don't have anything.
Treasurer Rogers? Trustee Theryn?
Good.
Um, I have just two quick things. So uh, speaking of M M D C, Katie Moore was going to come here. Are we rescheduling that? Do you know or?
It'll be the May twenty eighth meeting.
Perfect, okay. And then lastly, um, I had written the language on the capital planning for the ends. I just want to check, I didn't have a document that I could change? So if it works, okay, I'll, I'm going to send that with your other changes. So I'll send an email with that, okay. Clerk Cody?
Okay, I'm gonna read this, okay. Okay, so I just wanted to let everyone know Anita Glenn, one of our election inspectors, passed away a couple of weeks ago.
Oh.
Can you read this for?
Sorry. Thank you.
Anita Glenn. Anita Glenn, one of our inspectors passed away a couple of weeks ago, and I just wanted to acknowledge her for her service. She was a pleasure to work with. And I also want to thank everyone, everyone for working this election. Everything went smoothly. Anita did work really hard for us.
With that, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Before we adjourn, I'd just like to thank Trustee Lanin. To be mentioned by anybody in the same sentence with both those individuals is humbling, so. Not sure it's deserved, but I thank you.
It is. It is.
Any motion on the floor?
Move to adjourn.
Just gonna say a motion to adjourn?
Perfect. Is that a support?
I will support her, yes.
Okay, motion by Rogers, support by Lay to adjourn. Uh, all in favor of adjourned at nine twenty four P M, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign. We are adjourned at nine twenty four P M.